Want to call this meeting to order? You please.
I welcome you to join me for the pledge of allegiance. My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, my nation and my God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay. Notification of a public meeting has been posted. We have approval of the meeting minutes from September the 7th. Are there any additions, comments, changes, modifications? Hearing none. Without objection, the minutes are approved. Okay. We have agenda of two action items. Does anybody have any thoughts or additions to the agenda? No? All right. Okay. Now we come to the point where we have citizen comments on non-agenda items. So if the general public wishes to speak, please submit your request to the community development department over here by the monitor. You will be allowed three minutes to speak. The commissioners will respectfully listening to your comments at the podium. Please identify yourself, state your name and address up for the public record. We ask that you in turn be respectful of the public forum that you are in. This is public meeting is recorded and therefore becomes a matter of public record as does all correspondence on this issue directed to county officials. Please try to avoid repeating comments already offered. Please place your cell phones on silent mode. If you need to speak with the caller, please step outside the room. Just a reminder, planning commission is an advisory body to county council and as such, planning commission recommendations on this, any issue goes forward to county council through the community services and land use committee, then to county council for their review and voting determination. So the planning commission recommendation is a step in the review process and voting determination by county council. With that said, do we have any citizen comments of a non-agenda nature? Hearing, seeing none, hearing none, we'll move forward to the first action item, item number seven, which is a consideration of ordinance amending the community development code, section A, point six, point four oh, permitted activities to allow lodging, short-term housing rental in the Dale community preservation district.
Right. Hello. Right, so I'm going to jump into this one. So this one, applicant seeks to revise the Dale community preservation district to include short-term rentals as an allowable special use. The purpose of the DCP is to maintain or improve the livability and character of existing residential neighborhoods to encourage infill of available lands and to accommodate housing types which will relate well with existing neighborhood character, scale, and density. Per ordinance 202032, short-term rental standards were established in the community development code. At the time of adoption, the short-term rental use was added as a special use to all transect and conventional zones except for T1 natural preserve and S1 industrial. The special use was not added to any of the commercial, or the community preservation districts, however, DCP is consistent with transect zone districts that allow short-term rentals. Therefore, the addition of short-term rentals as a special use to this district is appropriate. And I'm just going to run through the amendment review standards real quick. So number one is consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the comprehensive plan. So yes, the proposed text amendment is consistent as this area is envisioned to be rural community. Number two is not in conflict with any provisions of the development code. No, the short-term rental use is not in conflict. The DCP, in the DCP, certain structures and uses serving governmental, religious, or recreational needs of such areas are permitted by special or conditional use subject to restrictions or requirements intended to preserve and protect residential neighborhood. Home uses are specifically provided for if they conform to the provisions of this section. Housing types permitted within the Dale CP area are limited to single-family and duplexes except within a planned development. Number three is required by changed conditions. Yes, it is. Per ordinance 202032, short-term rental standards were established as a special use in the CDC. And like I said, these standards were not added to the community preservation districts. Addresses a demonstrated community need, yes. Is consistent with the purpose and intent of the zones in the development code, yes, it is consistent. Number six, would result in logical and orderly development pattern. Yes, it would. As a special use, each applicant seeking to establish a short-term rental property in the DCP will be required to apply to the zoning board of appeals for approval. In addition to typical considerations, the ZBOA may also establish an appropriate rental limit as a condition of approval after conducting the public hearing. Number seven, would not result in adverse impacts on the natural environment. Yes, it would not result in any adverse impacts. Any development would need to adhere to resource protection, tree protection, wetland protection, and stormwater standards. And then, so we're done with that. And then D, the recommendation, staff recommends approval, and staff also recommends that the amendment be applied to the Dale mixed-use district. That is all.
Questions?
Kristin, on number three, you talked about the short-term rental standards, and they were not added to the community preservation districts when that was established. Do you know what the reason why that was, that happened?
Do that. I'm going to have Rob come because I was not here when that was done.
Yeah. Yes, just to answer your question, the reason that wasn't done is we wanted each one of those to be considered separately. And just a reminder, if you remember several years ago, the planning commission looked at several of the districts on Ladies Island. So this is very similar to that where a property owner who is interested in short-term rental came to the planning department requesting this text amendment be made, and so that's what's happening here.
Okay. Thank you. Other questions?
Rob, how many community preservation districts are there north of the Broad?
Okay. We have.
I, in terms of precedent, because I'm thinking about the CPO and ACPO.
Yeah.
Give me a sense.
So north of the Whale branch, we have Dale, Big Estates, and Sheldon. And then just south of the Royal branch, we have the Seabrook-Stewart Point Community Preservation District. And Ladies Island would be the only other one north of the Broad, and those have been addressed several years ago through text amendments, so they now allow short-term rentals.
So Dale, Big Estate, well, Dale's in front of us, but you're saying Big Estates, Sheldon, Stewart Point, and Ladies Island have allowed the short-term rentals?
No. Ladies Island has made, they've amended their code, or I mean, the CDC was amended to allow short-term rentals in the Ladies Island community preservation districts, and there are several of them. Seabrook-Stewart Point, Sheldon, and Big Estates currently do not permit short-term rentals. And Dale is what's being considered today.
So have you had requests for changes to text amendment from Big Estates, Sheldon, Seabrook, and Stewart?
No.
Do you anticipate that? Is this a precedent sent, setting?
Yes, and I think that the argument that we're making is that these CP districts are very similar to other districts like rural, T2 rural neighborhoods and T2 rural. You know, basically, the Seabrook-Stewart Point, or not Seabrook-Stewart Point, Big Estates and Sheldon, north of the Whale branch, actually are higher density than the surrounding rural zone property, yet the, in rural, you could do short-term rental, but you can't do them in those two community preservation districts. So from our standpoint, this change is logical within the framework of the community development code and where we permit them.
Okay, just to make it clear, so Sheldon and Seabrook, you're saying are denser already than Dale and Big Estates?
No, I'm saying they're denser than the surrounding, if you look at the map, this is just the Dale community preservation area, but around the blue is green, and that green is T2 rural.
Sure.
T2 rural allows short-term rental, but the blue, you know, the Dale CP and the Dale CP mixed-use district, which is the dark blue, don't allow them. So you have a situation where the less dense zoned properties allow short-term rental, but the more dense do not.
And is it your understanding that that is why this petition has come to your, comes to the planning commission?
Well, this petition is a individual property owner who is requesting that text amendment. But from our reviewing, the zoning map and the code and the way it's applied, this seems, this is logical within a framework of the CDC and the comprehensive plan.
So go to my original question, would this text amendment, or what effect, if any, would it have on like a CPO of a district such as St. Helena? Any, nothing?
Well.
What's your point of view?
Short-term rentals are already permitted on St. Helena Island, so.
In some neighborhoods, not all neighborhoods.
Well, the only districts where they're not permitted are the T1 natural preserves, so places like Bay Point or Cape Girardeau.
But for kind of 29 days, right? Isn't it, or a few times a month?
Yes. Yeah. This, the lim, yes, for, well, no, I mean, in the T2 rural district, which is the majority of St. Helena Island, and the transect zones that make up the Corners community, short-term rentals are already a special use in those districts.
So an individual would have to come before you or the ZBOA?
Yes. And we've been seeing a lot of them in your neighborhood, in the Coffin Point community.
Yes, I am. I'm very aware of that. Thus my question.
Yeah.
Let's see, I did have one more question. I've forgotten it.
Okay.
Rob, I have a question. If it only takes one request, one resident in the entire district to ask for this, and everybody then is subject to that change?
Well, that's what's being considered by the planning commission and then ultimately county council in making that change.
But I mean, it's, it's, it's not on the basis of a public vote for the entire district. It's just one person who's, has asked for this request, and we give, we make it automatically for the whole district. the whole district rather than a particular resident.
Yes, well, it's a request made by a private citizen, which is, you know, any private citizen has the right to petition for a zoning text amendment. And what we're saying is staff, in reviewing this proposed change, we believe it's consistent with the comprehensive plan and the code.
Okay. I have one other comment, and it leads me to a question, too. I did a little research on the impacts of short-term rentals on affordable housing. And there's a lot of research from institutions and universities that suggests it has an adverse impact on long-term rentals, driving up the price of longer-term rentals to a more profitable short-term rental market, and reducing the amount of available housing. And we just spent a lot of time in doing a housing, affordable housing analysis, and shows that we're in dire straits. Why do we want to expand the use of short-term rentals if it's going to have that kind of impact, or don't you believe that that's what's happening?
Well, I believe that there's two questions at hand. We already have a provision for short-term rentals in the Community Development Code. And it is our staff opinion that allowing it in the Dale CP applies that more equitably in the county. But if we want to reconsider our standards for short-term rental, then that's something I believe we need to approach in a comprehensive manner. And I don't believe that this, I mean, from our standpoint as staff, this is not necessarily the trigger point, the Dale community. I mean, I think that it's a larger question, it needs to be considered countywide. Whether it's, you know, and many communities have different ways of regulating them. The county, I mean, just to refresh, you know, the counties, the main way we regulate them is requiring each of them to come to the zoning board of appeals as a special use. So, that all of the local conditions, whether there's a history of bad behavior at that particular site, everything, the environment, all of those things could be considered by the ZBOA at that time. So, it allows them to have more scrutiny over each one, but it does open up the possibility of that use in just about every district in the county. So, that's our current policy. And so, the--
Good answer.
Many communities have different ways of enforcing them.
Thank you.
Okay.
Rob, just a quick question. When we're looking at a change to an entire district, does notification get treated any differently in that kind of scenario, or?
No, being that it's a text amendment, it's through, you know, the notification in the paper, but not posted property, because it's applying to an entire district. Thank you.
Yes.
Gee.
Go ahead.
So, Rob, just for clarification, even though this resident is from Dale, if this is approved, will this apply to all of the community preservation districts?
No, just, just the Dale CP district, the area that's in the light blue. And then, what we're recommending, because the dark blue district, which is the Dale mixed-use, that that would allow it as well, since that's a more, that's a more intense district than the Dale CP.
So, if anyone else, any other citizen was interested in this, they would have to make their own special request?
It depends on where they're located. The remaining areas of the county where short-term rentals are not permitted would be in the Seabrook or Big Estates Community Preservation Areas and Seabrook-Stewart Point. So, in those areas, if somebody wanted to do short-term rental, they might have to consider coming to the Planning Commission or making a text amendment. But if they're simply in an area that is zoned, T2 rural, you know, in the Sheldon area, they could already apply for a special use permit for short-term rental.
Yes.
I can't, I'm unable to express the things the way you did, because some of the language I'm still not familiar with. But you were talking about reviewing the entire comprehensive plan, and maybe you want to look at it separately. But this one, you set a precedent, well, we've already set the precedent in a way. So, we're basically saying, open up the floodgates, and by the time we get around to a comprehensive plan where it reviews this, it might be too late?
Yeah. I believe those floodgates were opened in 2020 when we adopted the short-term rental ordinance in the way, you know, so, and I don't, and I believe that there are some checks and balances with requiring it to be a special use and going before the zoning board of appeals. But this change in the Dale community is very small in comparison to what has already been approved in the county, if that makes sense.
Can the Dale community itself, at some point, say that short-term rentals are not working out the way we thought they were, and then become more restrictive? Or, once this is approved, the Dale community has no recourse to go back?
No, they could, if they decide that the impact of this change is unacceptable for the community, they can approach us with another text amendment or a different way of applying short-term rentals in that area.
And basically, ask for a reversal of what?
A reversal or a modification. You know, they might limit them to certain areas, or, you know, some communities actually have limits on the percentage or number of short-term rentals. So, you know, there are other ways of regulating them than the way the county does.
Rob, has there been an argument made that this is an economic development opportunity for members of the Dale community?
I don't believe, we made that argument in our staff report.
No, you didn't, that's why I'm asking.
I mean, it's a mean--
It's been made in other cases.
Yes, it does provide more options for a homeowner, but no, we have not, you know, touted this as an economic development.
So, you know, just to follow up on what Chairman Papas said, in terms of the bigger picture, affordable housing, this is not, you're not framing this as a bigger picture of economic development in Dale, or in the Dale area?
No, I would say we're responding to an existing regulation, and we're simply saying, for equity purposes, allowing this community to allow short-term rental, we believe is consistent with the way the code currently applies to short-term rental.
As appealed to by one landowner?
Yes. Yes.
Thank you.
Other questions?
Just out of curiosity, who then watches what's going on? If this could go forward as a recommendation and County Council would adopt it, then somebody who lives just outside the zone starts doing short-term rental? Who's watching, whether they're doing it actively or legally, or if that's the right word, you know?
It is a challenge, let's put it that way. Because it is very difficult to have smoking-gun proof that somebody is having a short-term rental that is, you know, not permitted correctly. I mean, and that's something that our code enforcement department spends a lot of time, you know, answering complaints about things like that. From the administrative side, you know, being that it's enforced through a special use permit, then our staff is reviewing each one separately and then making presentations at the zoning board of appeals, and then they ultimately make the decision. Or, they could add conditions. They could say, well, maximum this number of people, or, you know, other things about the external impacts of the short-term rental. But the administration ultimately goes to the planning and zoning department, and our codes enforcement handles the enforcement.
Okay. So, from an enforcement perspective, it would be probably cleaner not to have short-term rental, because you don't have to worry about it.
Well, it depends. By not having short-term rental, are you saying it's not permitted? Or are you saying, we just don't care, go ahead and do what we want to do?
No, 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 it's not permitted.
If it's not permitted, then I would say that's more work for code enforcement.
Oh, all right, well, I saw that wrong, then.
Well, you have a good set of regulations that were developed in 2020.
Yeah.
But they need to be examined, and what result they have produced. And if they're not producing the result that you want, and causing you more angst, particularly for affordable housing, that's something that I think deems worthy of research. End of policy, I mean. Well, eventually, yes, whatever the research shows. Any other comments, questions of Mr. Merchant? Is the applicant here? I just want, is, by any chance, Mr. Dawson? Michael Dawson?
I don't see him here.
Okay, all right. All right, well, I guess then, if there is no further comments, thank you, Rob.
Okay.
Thank you. Is anybody, I have no comments offered for this subject by the members of the public, so I'll bring this back up to the podium. Any comments you all would like to make before we take the motion? John?
I'll start. I guess for me, at some point, I'd like to see a conversation about, in scenarios like this, where you're dealing with districts, that there's a better way to be able to communicate to the public what's happening, so we feel confident that there's more of an opportunity for input. That said, that's really not what's before us this evening. And based on what staff has said, I mean, I certainly am in agreement with the fact that if you've got this type of use allowed in the T2, and that every individual case is going before our Board of Zoning Appeals, that there is a checks and balances in place to ensure that there's an opportunity at that point for public input and to understand if that particular site makes sense for this type of use or not. I'm personally comfortable with this change.
Thank you. Other comments, anybody would like to add? Okay, may I have a motion then? John?
In the case of CDP 0042-2024, with the consideration of an ordinance amending the Community Development Code, Section A 6.40, to allow short-term housing rental in the Dale Community Preservation District, I would move a recommendation of approval based on staff report and the testimony given this evening.
A second.
A second?
Second.
Have a second? All right, let's take a vote. And any further discussion first? Okay, all those in favor of the motion, raise your hand. Three, four. All those opposed to the motion, raise your hand. Four against it, the motion is defeated.
There's a second? I can't see.
Oh, sorry. That's what happens when you put these things up.
So, if the motion is defeated, we have to give the council a motion that we would support going forward. So, do I have a motion, can I have a motion to not approve this particular text amendment change? Anybody who voted for it, against it, would like to make that--
Do I have, oh, go ahead, go ahead.
Go ahead, okay.
Right.
So, Chairman Papas, I make a motion that we do not vote to approve the text amendment change to CDC Section A 6.40 to allow short-term housing rental in the Dale Community Preservation District.
Thank you. Have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in the favor of the motion of denial, raise your hand. Two, three, four, five. All those not in favor of the motion? How did we get it in? Okay, that's three. The motion denied is approved, as a recommendation going forward to County Council. All right, finished with that issue? Item number eight on the agenda, consideration of an ordinance amending the zoning map for parcels of property, a lot of zeros in front of them, located on Okati Highway from T2 Rural to T4 Neighborhood Center and T3 Neighborhood, using a village place type overlay village designation.
Okay. Well, good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the Planning Commission. What we are considering today is a proposed map amendment, which is a unique kind called a place type overlay. And I think some of you may remember, about a year ago, the Planning Commission looked at a similar, and it actually included some of the land that is under this current consideration on the other side of Cherry Point Road. But just to provide a brief overview, place type overlay is a provision in our code that allows for an upzoning with a little more detail and more, being more prescriptive in the type of development that would be the outcome for this upzoning. And the areas where it's applied, in our comprehensive plan, we have a future land use map, which provides a general overview of the type of land uses and intensity in various areas of the county. In addition to that, we have place types that are identified in the comprehensive plan, which indicate areas of the county where we're proposing higher density than the surrounding area, mixed-use walkable communities. And so, these areas are delineated in the comprehensive plan, and the current site that is being considered today is one of those areas. And that is what is being proposed, a village place type overlay. And what our ordinance does is it provides a, I would say, a kind of a palette of different zoning districts that would make up, in this case, a village place type, and the percentage of each district that would, you know, ranges of the percentage of each district that applies to that. So that you're creating a community. And in addition to the zoning, it requires a, what we call a thoroughfare plan or street network that is adopted as well as the zoning districts itself, an open space plan, and then other features. So, it provides more specificity than simply a straightforward rezoning, and allows more prescriptive. So, the districts that would be adopted are much more specific in the type of development that it would produce. If you think of a mixed-use community like Haversham, New Point, that is kind of the intent of this district, that it's creating more walkable communities with buildings addressing the street, sidewalks, porches, that type of development. So, that is what's being proposed here, I just wanted to provide that overview. This is, the total site area is 121.43 acres. But something interesting about this, if you can go back to that map, and a lot of this is a response, I think, to the way the original proposal that we looked at last year was received by the Planning Commission, and ultimately, council, you know, denied the request at first reading. This was, I believe it was October of 2023, so it was about a year ago. Many of the comments that were made, I mean, there was general concern about the increase in traffic, but also the impact on the school, on the capacity of Okati Elementary, and other public schools in Southern Beaufort County where there are capacity issues. In addition, there was much opposition from the Cherry Point community along the Okati River. And so, this particular development is, it's a little bit different, and I'll just kind of walk through, if you look at the map, the area to the south of Cherry Point Road, that is what we looked at last year. That's the, that area is currently zoned rural. And then, if you go north of Cherry Point Roads, you could see in this map, parcel C, that is actually Okati Elementary. So, that is a site that is currently owned by the school district, developed as an elementary school. And then, you have parcel D at the top left-hand corner, which is another property owned by the school district. Part of that is wetlands, part of it is currently being improved to provide another means of access to Okati Elementary for school buses. And what is being proposed, in addition to this rezoning, is that the school district and the developer are proposing-- is that the school district and the developer are proposing a land swap. So the property that is indicated as parcel D is currently owned by the school district. They're proposing to convey that to the developer, where the developer would convey parcel B, which is a 30-acre site at the rear of that Cherry Point property that we looked at last year. Is that? So it's, it's basically the school district benefits because they get, currently, that property now with the wetlands, with the access road, is really not ideal for their minimum site area for a future school site. The developer benefits from having land that is closer to 170. And also, this provides a buffer between this development in the Cherry Point and River Oaks community by having a school site located on parcel B. So that's kind of an overview of what is being proposed here. The dark purple on this map is proposed as T4 Neighborhood Center. And then the lighter purple is T3 Neighborhood. And the school sites, of course, are not going to be developed as housing or density with that. So even though it's a much larger land area, the actual size in comparison is very similar to what was being proposed before. That yellow parcel is another property owner, and that's not being considered for this upzoning at this point. So. Before we go any further, is there any questions about what is being proposed?
The swap was for the two acres in the D that were owned by the school?
No. Well, there's some little more details with that entrance road because the school district is going to retain the land where that new entrance road is coming in at the top, if you see right there.
The one that goes through the wetlands?
Yes.
Oh, up here?
Yes.
So that, if you look at the map, there's a larger rectangle there, which includes that entrance road and then the dark purple, which is all parcel D. That is what the school district, well, this might make it a little clearer. That's what the school district currently owns. And then the rear portion of that Cherry Point property, that 30 acres, is what they're proposing to buy from the developer or trade for this property.
Okay.
So just with that overview, and there's, I guess, some question about the number of units being proposed? Is that?
I can go to what we're proposing when we call it Sketchmaster.
Okay. But is there a, is there a ceiling of how many units?
There is.
Okay, and what is that?
Two different, it's.
He can identify himself.
Can you go to the mic? Yeah, identify yourself?
Yeah, I had two different numbers, so I just wanted to clarify that.
Hello, Brian Whitmer with Whitmer Jones-Kiefer, we're the land planners on this project. So. So we are on the parcel that, the lower parcel, which is A, it's 258 residential units and a max of 290 commercial retail mix. And then D would be, parcel D, which is, yes, is 132 max residential and 125 commercial max. And those are the maximums. When the plan comes in, it's going to be a combination of those. But as defined right now, that is the max you could do, the max you could do.
All right.
And that takes into account all four parcels?
It does, we're really, and I think, Rob, when we get to, and when I talk, if we pull up this plan, I think it'll be easier to see if we get to Sketchmaster.
Okay.
I think we'll talk about that, and that'll help.
All right. Okay. I saw some numbers that were in the letters from the Mayla Bluff community and then also from the TIA, so I was a little confused. But I came up with the maximum allowable, if you go six dwellings per acre with a village place type, it's 384 units, just to give you an idea. The plan that the Planning Commission considered last year, that was that smaller area, could have been 426 units, just to give you the comparison of what you looked at at the previous time.
And that was parcel A and B, correct?
Yes.
Was last year, they wanted 428?
Yes.
And now you're just saying, just with that parcel A, it's going to be 384?
Not with parcel A, with parcel A and D.
Okay.
So. So the other thing is that, and this will get further into discussion, that if there is a development agreement, then that's something in addition that could be negotiated as far as getting more specific on commercial and residential. But that's what the ordinance would allow with this rezoning based on the acreage.
A question for you.
Yes.
Parcel D, where the wetlands are currently located, and there's going to be a road through it, and I thought you said some units are going to be built there. Is there a plan to create wetlands somewhere else on the properties?
Can you go to the, I guess, the more detailed plan? Yeah. I think, yeah, go to the next one. Is there one more that has the streets? Oh, maybe not.
Probably looking for the developer's.
Ah, there we go. Okay, no, not.
That's the old one.
There we go.
There we go.
Okay. So. That's a complicated question. The road that's going through the wetlands is currently permitted. So that's gone through the development permitting process with the county. And it's under construction now. It's my understanding they want to get that open as soon as possible. So, you know, that, but the additional wetlands, and this map here shows the, both the layout of streets, the network of streets, in addition to the green areas or the proposed buffers and open space that is for the site. So the other wetland, the remaining wetlands on that parcel D are being preserved with this plan.
Okay, I thought they were going to be fully developed.
No, no. So what I'm going to do, I'm going to let Kevin Sullivan, our transportation planner, talk about the transportation issues, and then I'll get back into the review of the development and how it squares with our criteria that we use, and then go on to our recommendation.
Is that we're going to discuss the staff comments?
Yes.
Fifteen, sixteen things?
Yes.
Okay.
Good evening, Commissioner?
Good evening.
Good evening, Kevin.
Please identify yourself.
Kevin Sullivan, Beaufort County Engineering. So we understand that there were changes made to the development. Of course, Rob went through the overlay district and the preliminaries as to how we are looking at what to do with this project moving forward. As engineers, we wanted to understand the traffic impact. So we asked the applicant to provide what we call a TIA memorandum, so we could express some information to the Planning Commission as fast as possible. This is one of the tools we use in our planning toolbox to, you know, to describe what's going on with the changes, number one, and to demonstrate the impact that the changes might have in the area. And lastly, to determine what is to be done next. So the report is up online right now. We can walk through some of the report. But just so the Planning Commission knows, this report, what it does was, what it does is it describes the changes from the new, I mean, from the old traffic impact to what they're planning to do now. It describes those changes. That's the first D. The second D it does, it demonstrates what impacts those changes may have to the roadway network. And number three, the third D is determines. It determines what is to be done next. So as you walk through the actual TIA memorandum, it starts with the trip generation from the first study that was done on page number two. And it details the number of AM and the number of PM trips for that development. I believe it was 400, 400 and something units. And as you move down, we actually asked the applicant to show us the highest and best use scenarios. So we wanted them to kind of think through what they may possibly be putting together because it's really in the early stages. They really don't know if they want to go left, they want to go right, they want to go up, they want to go down. So to be as transparent as we possibly could for the commission, we wanted them to put in this memorandum the scenarios that they think may be the highest and best use. And they did that. So they really worked good, they worked fast, and they put a very well-molded memorandum together for us and for you. So if you go on to the next, you can see, I guess you can start with scenario A, it's kind of small to see. But yeah, that's scenario A. And each scenario is slightly higher as far as the total trips generated per day is slightly higher, or some of them are a good bit higher in trips than the existing study. So that's the transparency that we wanted to show in the memorandum. So we know that what the original study said, that the improvements that needed to be made based on the trips generated there, we understand because there's more trips being generated with these proposed scenarios, that those particular improvements will still be need, those particular improvements will still need to be made, even with this new development. So that's our understanding moving forward. So the things that we said that we wanted to do with the original study with respect to mitigating traffic and making it more of a complete street type of feel, like Mr. Merchant spoke of before, with making sure we're taking care of the pedestrians, the buses, the cars. We feel as though those same improvements will need to be made. And I don't want to jump ahead of myself because Rob has to come back up and talk about the development agreement and how we're going to combine the need for an updated TIA. Because this is like a abbreviated TIA. It has the three D, but it's actually missing the fourth D, which is details. So an updated TIA will give you, it would describe the changes, it would demonstrate the impact, and it would determine what to be done next. But it would also give you way more details because it would show the level of services. It will talk about our improved, our planned approved improvements on SC 170, the super street, with cars, instead of making a left at the light, they would have to make a right and then go mid-block to make a left. And that's going to, and that's what we foresee needing to be done on SC 170 based on our 2035 traffic numbers. And this development is included in those analysis as far as those 2035 traffic numbers. So that's the gist of what this memorandum is. I really would like for you all to hear what the applicant has to say. And Mr. Dillon is the engineer, and he worked on his memorandum. So I think it's worth his time to kind of go into.
So the, it's in the conclusion.
Yes.
Another TIA is going to have to be conducted.
Yes.
As part of the development agreement that goes to County Council.
Yes, and yes, yes, and Rob can go into that.
One of the four scenarios, or maybe a fifth one that hasn't been studied, might be a part of that.
Correct, correct.
But in its essence, you say the inflow and outflow don't measurably change the infrastructure needs within the site?
Not measurably. Right, not measurably. But we do need that TIA if we want to be precise in how we do ratchet up those different improvements.
So what we saw as a thorough plan, a thoroughfare plan.
Yes.
Isn't necessarily going to be the final thoroughfare?
No, no. Well, that's true. I mean, Rob, you can come up with, I believe that the thoroughfare plan is a shall. That shall be, there's certain whiffs, it has to be that way, the sidewalks, it has to be that way. So that, I believe that's a shall.
Thank you.
Yeah, I don't want to confuse the traffic impacts analysis and the type of issues that that addresses really have to do with the external impacts of the development or on streets that are within the area like Cherry Point. But the thoroughfare plan is something that, as that goes forward, you know, and it's recommended by the Planning Commission, approved by council, that is something that's set and needs to be followed by the applicants as they develop it, develop the property. So what I would like to propose to do, I'd go over the larger planning issues related to this development and our recommendation, and then allow the applicant to, I guess, go a little more into detail about the actual place type overlay that is being proposed, the detail of the nature of the development. I think that might be the easiest way to do this. So as we evaluate this, of course, a big factor has to do with the traffic impact, and that's part of our overall zoning map amendment review standards that we have to use for all zoning map and place type overlay. But the first and foremost is that the question about whether it's consistent with the comprehensive plan and by virtue of what is being proposed and its location, it's a place type overlay, village place type, and it corresponds with what is in our future land use plan in the comprehensive plan. So in the type of development that it is creating, walkable development especially, which is interconnected with other communities and with the school, furthers the type of development that we are proposing for areas where we are seeing more intense development. So for those reasons, we believe that overall what is being proposed is consistent with our comprehensive plan and its goals and the future land use plan that's in our comp plan. Is suitable for a future school. And capacity issues, of course, are very important south of the Broad for the Beaufort County School District. We always have difficulty, and this required by change conditions. I don't believe that this particular proposal was required by change conditions. We believe it's compatible with the existing proposed uses of the surrounding land. And especially compared to the previous proposal, this does, by the virtue of the school site where it's located, provides a better transition between the more intense developments closer to 170 and the less dense development along the Okati River. So it provides a more, I guess, more compatible land uses uses closer to the lower-density residential land uses in that area. And for that reason, we believe that it also mitigates the adverse impacts of nearby lands and results in a more logical and orderly development pattern. As far as its impact on the natural environment, our ordinance has very, you know, formidable environmental standards, stormwater standards. Anything site-specific, that's something that could be a condition, you know, as this moves forward. But we believe that the current standards in our code adequately address new development. And they have also located their open space in areas where there are significant features, whether they're wetlands or existing stands of trees on the site. And then ultimately, question nine, you know, it's yet, you know, it does, it's served by public facilities. We believe that the school district question has been adequately addressed because it is, you know, providing for a future school site. The question about transportation gets a little more complicated, and we believe that that can be worked out through the development agreement and also coordinated with the proposed improvements on 170 that are coming from the county. But we believe that it, you know, is adequately served by public facilities if they're, you know, coordinated properly. And that's a big question with the referendum looming out there because the timing of the 170 improvements will most likely be impacted by the funding and the ability to pay for it. So that's something to keep in mind. Overall staff recommendation? Just to summarize, and I made a revision just to provide some clarity. I'll go ahead and pass this out to everyone to walk you through our recommendation. As I had said earlier, we believe that the, so, we support the proposed place type overlay amendment, but with the following conditions and comments. So, you know, the first is, I kind of walked you through the criteria for considering a map amendment, so we believe that this meets that criteria. We believe, I guess, on the, you know, as, as Kevin spoke with you.
Just one page, right?
Yeah, it, two sides.
Two sides on one paper.
Yeah. So, the impacts in a transportation network could be addressed by onsite and offsite improvements to one seventy Cherry, Cherry Point Road and implemented through a development agreement, and that's key. Um, all the improvements will need to be coordinated with proposed regional improvements to SC one seventy. The zoning amendment facilitates a land transfer that provides a thirty acre set aside for future public school site. The regulating plan, thoroughfare plan and open space plan need to be revised to meet the requirements of the community development code. And these issues are outlined in the attached sheet, or I guess on the flip side of this paper. Um, and we recommend the staff that this be addressed prior to going forward to the community services and, uh, land use committee of county council. And a lot of these have to do with, in our code, and this is, well, I'll, I'll finish with the, with the, with the recommendations and I'll go to that. And then finally, the development agreement should be entered into between the developer and county council to assure that all the conditions of this recommendation are implemented concurrently with development. And this development agreement should be adopted concurrently with third and final reading of the zoning map amendment. So, we believe that the complexity of what is being proposed here needs to be bolstered with a development agreement, uh, by county council for a number of reasons. You know, I think that the land swap with the school district should be memorialized in that agreement. The, uh, proposed transportation, both onsite and offsite improvements, improvements to Cherry Point Road, all of that needs to be addressed as well. In addition, if the proposed number of dwelling units, um, is lower, of what is being proposed is lower than what the maximum that could be permitted with the zoning change, that's something that we believe should be the development agreement as well. So, as far as the comments, so, I wanted to, I guess, remind everyone, this is a little more complicated than a straightforward rezoning because we have a thoroughfare plan, an open space plan that accompany it. And so, for that reason, and I had this conversation with Ed earlier, or I guess last week, is that it, it makes a little more difficult for staff. We mean, we have to make a determination whether an application is complete, and then there are issues about the substance of the application. So, when we're determining completeness, we're basically letting the applicant know we've received your application, and this could be on the next planning commission agenda. But then, when you get something like a, a place type overlay with this level of complexity, staff needs to review it. And so, in that review, we've come up with some questions and comments for the applicant. We've provided these to them, um, and we want to make sure we work through them. But these have to do with some of the details of how things are laid out in the community. We have such things as maximum block sizes to, to promote a network of streets. Um, we have requirements that, you know, that people are within walking distance of some sort of civic space, and that's where that pedestrian shed applies, if you see the radii on the, on this map. And also the, you know, the civic and open space plan, very specific requirements for that. And so, that's what these issues on the back are. So, that, this gives you, I think, just a little more clarity in how we crafted our, you know, staff recommendation to the planning commission.
Is your question, Rob?
Okay.
So, these particular issues need to be addressed before it gets to the community use, land use committee?
We believe they should, because I, you know, you know, that way, it, it's, it's moving forward, it's something that we can say is meeting the requirements of our code.
Okay.
And, um, you know, our concern is it getting too far into the process and, and still having to make these revisions.
So, I suspect then you don't see a material change to the application between now and time it gets to land use?
Well, I mean, it, none, these issues would mean some small changes to what, what you see on this slide here. So, some changes to the way the open space is configured, some minor changes to the street plan so that the block sizes are meeting our maximum block sizes and block lengths, things like that.
Okay.
Is, is what we would anticipate.
Alright. Questions are Rob? Okay, who's up first? Go ahead.
I don't know. Um, Rob, on the, on Okati Landing staff recommendation, so, the flip side, I guess, it's not one and two, and what you said, this development agreement should be adopted concurrently with third and final reading. So, I have problems with development agreements and public input to begin with. So, why is it third reading? I mean, why isn't it at land use committee or at first reading?
Well, I guess I'm talking about the eventual document. When you time it with the granting of the zoning map amendment, both parties are kind of concurrently coming to the table saying, um, it's basically making sure that the zoning approval has the conditions that are in the development agreement, that they're all adopted at the same time versus, because you have to, a development agreement only works when both parties come to the table and agree to, to the details.
Right, but my point is always that where's the public in, in, in that conversation?
Well, so, the development agreement is basically a, a tool to implement the, this, what is being proposed. And it also has transparency in the three readings of county council and review by the, the land use committee.
Including the conditions, but, but my, I, I still don't understand why it has to go to third reading. Um, i- i- in my opinion, I would think that those conditions would have to be materially met, and there has to be evidence that they're met before third reading occurs. And you're just saying, no, the development agreement can go ahead at third reading?
No, I guess what I'm saying here, the development agreement has to go through three readings as well. And so, each one of those readings is public. What I'm saying here is that the two should be adopted at the same time. That's all I'm saying. Because.
Okay, that's a little different from what I heard you say and what this says, but.
Okay.
Thank you.
That's what I meant to say. Because that's the way it's been done with, with, every other time that the, the development is agreement, development agreement is done with a rezoning, it's done concurrently. But both, third and final reading for both are at the same time, is what I'm getting at.
Rob, I just had a question about village place type overlay in general. Well, when I first saw the application, my initial question is, why are we upzoning the school sites? And then I realized, well, we need the, the T three to meet the requirements of what's laid out in the code in terms of the village place type overlay. But then I also was thinking, based on what I read, in terms of the intent of the village place type overlay, is that much of that T three is really intended to be a residential component that supports what's happening in the, the T four. Where in this case, um, virtually all the T three is civic space. So, that, that seems a little bit inconsistent with what I would have envisioned or expected based on my understanding of the code, what a village place type overlay is intended to accomplish. And then the second part of that was that I know, it also talks about when you have civic spaces required as part of the village, it refers to section two, three, eight, open space, civic space, civic buildings. And under that section of the code, it says for new school campuses, you shouldn't exceed fifteen acres for high schools, ten acres for middle schools, and five acres for elementary schools. And I mean, clearly, we've got thirty-plus acres for a future school, so I just wanted to get staff's take on those, what seem like discrepancies in terms of what's in the code in terms of the village place type overlay and what's being proposed.
Okay. Yeah, it, the, the question you ask about the school site area is a little more difficult because I think what you have is, is, I would say, more of a planning ideal versus school district policy. And so, what I see is, is some sort of striking of a balance between what their facility needs are, you know, if they're going to do a middle school or, uh, you know, an early learning center, however they, they eventually develop that school site. It's, you know, they're going to have to work with their own school siting policies in addition to the, the zoning as well. So, it could be addressed through how we, um, distribute, you know, a school site consists of ball fields, um, play areas, things like that. You know, as that develops, this could be indicated as, as civic space or open space, and this, you know, the school site more compressed to, uh, address, you know, where the school building is and, and the, the facilities immediately related to the school building. It's a, it, it's, it's, it's a tough fit, you know, but I, I believe that, um, you know, I, I think that this overall would, you know, benefit the community, and it provides a realistic site, you know, for a future school expansion.
And then, in, in terms of the mix of T four and T three, um, I mean, it, it seems like really the T four that's being proposed is less serving the village, and it's going to have to be supported by a much larger, um, market area than what I would have envisioned in terms of the, the village in terms of a concept, so.
Yeah. And I think that that's a fair point, and, um, I would recommend, you know, the, the applicant's going to be talking through the, the proposal, and I think that, you know, that should be a question brought to the applicant.
Thank you.
Okay.
I think I recall a year ago when we were looking at this, the school district, Okati Elementary was at almost capacity, one point nine one or something like that. And I don't believe the current school referendum is asking for an additional school. Um, and so, I was wondering why the school district was not represented here tonight?
Well, they are part, you know, the, so, they're part of the application? And that, that is a good question. You know, we've, we've been coordinating with them, we've had meetings with the school district. You're right, this is not part of the current referendum. That referendum is building a new school over in a May River campus, but not in this location. So, this is a land set aside for future needs for the school district. Yeah.
Okay.
As, as it's going to be proposed in that zoning for parcel B, um, under T four NC, it's a, considered a special use for a school, is that correct? Special use?
In, uh.
For parcel B, that area that we're, that we're talking about right now for future use, right?
Yeah, it's a good. Do you have that, Kristen? Yeah.
While she's looking that up, that area obviously will be deeded to Beaufort County School System, correct?
Yes, that's part of the agreement.
Somewhere down the line, would the school, as, as it gets owned as either T four NC or T three N, could they possibly sell parts of those land if the large, you know, I think John even said, the footprints that is required for a high school, elementary school, middle school? If they find that here we have twenty acres that we need, and here's another ten that we're not going to do anything to, could they possibly sell that? And homes could be built on that at that point under the village type overlay, is that correct?
Well, that, that's why I recommend the development agreement, those, you know, that school district rather, short of a restricted covenant or something that would, that say that this property could only use, be used for educational purposes, and that's a private, you know, matter with the, with the deed, I would recommend that that's a type of issue that would be addressed in the development agreement. That if this land is transferred and it's zoned this way, that for the life of this agreement, this, this is for, you know, school use only or for, you know, school site.
Okay.
John? Sorry, one, one last question, I promise, Rob. And I know the place type overlay is relatively a new creature for all of us, not only for staff, but also for the commission in terms of, I'm going to say historically, but we really haven't seen that many of them. It seems like the last couple of plans that we've seen that became the regulatory or regulation, regu- regulating plan, excuse me, um, looked more like what the applicant was showing on their sketch master plan than the level of information that's being shown on what's labeled in the staff report as the regulating plan, because it actually shows kind of examples of what building footprints might look like in the non-residential area. So, I guess my question is, um, trying to be consistent in terms of what we're asking of applicants as far as a regulating plan to move forward, would we be able to have that level of information that shows up on the sketch master plan as becoming the actual regulating plan rather than what we're seeing on the screen right now?
Well, the ordinance doesn't, the ordinance requires the thoroughfare plan, and it requires the regulating plan with the zoning districts, but it doesn't get down to individual buildings. So, the last time that the planning commission, you know, when you looked at the Cherry Point place type overlay, that information was provided for illustrative purposes, but it wasn't something that was going to be regulatory with the place type overlay.
Sorry, I'm looking at my notes, because I, I thought when it described, um, the plan, it, it specifically mentioned buildings as one of the things that even though it recognized that they were illustrative, that at least it was showing. And part of the reason I think that's at least important for me is, if you see a series of four small footprint structures on a particular block rather than one large footprint structure, that has an impact in terms of potential uses and how it might affect circulation and parking and a whole other kind of array of types of things, so I, I think it's useful, but, um, and I, it seems like we had had those kinds of footprints on other regulating plans that we had seen, but maybe I'm wrong.
I believe they were provided with the Cherry Point, but I can't think of any other ones that the planning commission looked at. One thing I will say is that the transect zones have restrictions on the, the overall size of buildings or the size of footprints. So, the maximum number of units for an apartment is twelve units for building, you know, and so, you're, you're talking about smaller footprints or smaller, more fine-grained, uh, buildings, unless you're getting to kind of a main street storefront area. So, um, there is a lot more in the transect zones that provide that type of community character and the, the, the nature of development than in a typical zoning, you know, conventional zoning district.
Okay, thank you.
Rob, just one last question. As a, and our recommendation to go forward for the rezoning, uh, we can add all of the conditional, um, staff comments and any other comments that we think are appropriate to, that have, things that need to be done are part of that recommendation. In other words, we don't drop them somewhere along the way. Uh, because there, and some of the correspondence we've received, there's a number of recommendations to be included, and we haven't heard about those yet. So, this is more than just our recommendation for the rezoning, based on the regulating plans and all the plans that have been submitted, because a lot of things haven't been done but are in progress, and we need to make sure that we stay tuned to them in all the ways that the public has demonstrated that they want or get negotiated between the developer and the community. Uh, I'm very pleased to see, based on the correspondence I've seen, that the community... I'm very pleased to see, based on the correspondence I've seen, that the community has been very impressed by, I think it was Mr. Richard Swartz, who's been in dialogue with, with them, both communities, Malin and Cherry Point proposed. And is very happy that these issues are being addressed. Question is, we don't want to drop the ball on that expectation. So it's going to be our recommendation to carry forward a lot of things that don't wait until the final say by the planning, by the county council, but the land use folks are going to have some work to do as well. That's my viewpoint. Thank you. Who's next? Kim Lee?
Yeah, I'll go ahead. Once again, Brian Whitmer, Whitmer Jones-Kiefer, we're the land planners on this. And Rob, thanks for the intro and kind of walking through a lot of it. I'll try not to be redundant on items that Rob has covered. Our team that's here, who we're going to get up and talk about our individual pieces, I'm going to go ahead and introduce. Dylan Turner's going to talk about traffic, so questions that relate to traffic or road improvements Dylan will answer. Jeff Ackerman is here, our civil engineer. And then Richard Swartz is on the Zoom call. He's going to join us and he's going to talk about some background of the project. And then that dialogue he's had with the neighbors. So he wants, he's going to fill in some gaps or make sure that all that information's conveyed there. And lastly, Walter Nestor, our land use attorney's here. We can talk development agreement questions come to him. So he's best to answer those.
Rob, can we put the sketch master plan up? I think it may.
Easiest to talk to that. And while Rob's pulling that up, we've, the staff comments, I think there were 16. We've reviewed and we're fine with all those. We started looking at addressing those. So our client and us, we have no concerns about those. There were two or three, Rob, that were new that I think I'm good with. I just, just coming right off the cuff, if I may, some point if we can just retouch on those, just to make sure. But I think they sounded fine, but those are new. So just wanted to hear those again. This plan here, I thought is easier to talk to because it shows the upper left-hand corner. You can see how that's no longer purple. And that's the area that the, the school would be swapping for the parcel B, which is kind of mid-page. So this plan shows that pretty clearly. I believe the school had a letter of support that they also sent. So that came along with some letters from the residents, but I'm going to let Richard talk about those because he's, he knows all the detail on that. So I'm going to let him speak to where that is and the dialogue he's been having. The plan, and this is the village, the village place overlay. And when we look at it from a planner's standpoint, and that's what we are, it isn't just the land. We're looking at the adjacent lands to it. So you have residential around it. So that'll also be part of this because I think the intent of this is not to just spot zone a couple of pieces. It's to look at the bigger area. And I think that's why those nodes in the comprehensive plan are identified that way. And that's why we'd have some T four and then some lesser residential. We'd have that civic space. And then we're going to have mixed use areas. So that's our take on how the, on how these overlay districts work and look. And when you get this overlay, this village place type overlay, you're, you also get that regulating plan. And what that does is that sets some parameters for how the site will be developed. As we're starting to hit on the roadways, it will identify the ones that, in the commercial areas, they're going to have angled parking and they're going to have sidewalks and it's going to be a complete street there. So you're going to have that. And then the next tier down where you're a little bit more residential, you'll have on-street parking and sidewalks. And this is all going through the thoroughfare plan, the street stage sections that town identifies, or the county, excuse me. And we've identified that in the regulating plan, which section applies to which area. So it's a tiered road section and that's in, it's in that interior block where you see we've started to hit it, how the buildings work. So we have those road sections that way. And they're creating blocks. And as Rob was talking about, we have a few of them, minor tweaks, just to get to the standards. We're real close. But the other advantage of that block system is you have vehicular stop movements every 600 feet, 800 feet, depending on the area. That's traffic calming. That's much better than other ways to traffic calm. That also is the right place for pedestrians to cross. So when you lay out these, this village place type with the thoroughfares in, in the block network, you get a gridded street that's going to slow down traffic. It's going to let pedestrians cross. It's going to make interconnectivity much easier because these roads can start to connect not only to the parcels that you see highlighted up here, but to the adjacent parcels. So that's part of the intent is to, when you look at this, when you look at some of the criteria for what you're looking for, we want to provoke development patterns that are safe and effective and multimodal. And I think when you start to lay it out this way, you get that. You get, hey, I can ride a bicycle. The parking, the parking or the big parking areas would be behind the buildings with some on the street, but the sidewalks aren't cut by driveways happening every so often. They are safer sidewalks. So you have multiple ways that you can get around in these neighborhoods. You want a variety of housing types. And that is what you would get in this area is you would get variety from some of the adjacent neighborhoods to some, some that would happen on these properties. You're going to get a variety of housing types, housing types, excuse me. You want focal areas and, and in this, you know, we're going to have park spaces and you're going to have civic spaces. You're going to have the schools. And we are going to have an area that will have more of a mixed use. So we're looking at those focal areas. So when we started to look through what's the advantages or what are the criteria for that village place type, we think that we're hitting most of these from a planning standpoint. There's many more, but when we start to look through, we're checking the boxes on these. So, and all that's in the community are the comprehensive plans as far as how that works. The, on this plan, the, where we're a little, looking at more density or more of the mixed use would be adjacent to 170. And then as you get a little further back towards the school site, that's where the residential density, that's where it would be more residential. So that's, that's why we've shown this sketch. So you get an idea of how it works. And it just isn't that regulating plan that you saw on the slide before. Couple other things we've done on this plan, there's a 75-foot buffer on the southern side of parcel B. And I know that has been increased the 75 feet. It's been some dialogue and discussion between the neighbors and Richard Swartz to make that buffer bigger there because there's some existing homes in that area. So that buffer has been increased. And there's, and we have OCRM buffer that runs from there all the way down that southern property line as well. I'm, I think if we can, if you're fine, if we want to hold questions until everybody on our team is discussed, then we can kind of break them up. If it's a traffic question, Dylan can answer it. If it's a land use or a, or the development agreement, that would be Walter. Or if it's planning, that would be me. So I'd like to do it that way. And at this time, if we can get, is Richard on the Zoom still?
I am.
Okay. Got to let, I'm going to hand it over to Richard Swartz, the owner, and let him give some background on the project. And then also talk about dialogue and communication he's had with the adjacent neighborhoods.
Thank you, commissioners. Thank you for your time. And I apologize I'm not there in person. I am a, it's important to know that I'm not an out-of-town developer. I've been around here involved in housing development and, and since 96. I live in Rose Hill Plantation. I'm an unincorporated Beaufort County. So I'm close to the property and I care what happens. At, at one point, I was partly through different companies responsible for most of the housing built in the, in the southern Beaufort County area. So I'm experienced. As the new LMO has come out and identified the villages of where Beaufort County on the long-range planning wants to do business, that one of those village circles are identified right where we are. As Commissioner Henny pointed out, the LMO has been around, but it's kind of a new thing when doing developments. I have tried over the past few years unsuccessfully to try and incorporate some of the elements in the straight plan. So when this property became available, I thought this could be something that could work in the place overlay LMO as it exists today without asking for concessions. And I thought that was a great approach. If we could get all the stakeholders involved and, and planning can use the LMO the way it's meant to be, I thought that this was a great basis to, to work on this, this community. And the stakeholders, of course, are the neighboring communities, the Cherry Point residents, the school district and their strategic vision, and greater residents in the regional area. There, there is a shopping desert in that area. And there, and residents are being built. Sun City East, Riverbend, Maile and Bluff, River Oaks, Cherry Point are building new homes, residents. Argent East down the road. There, there is a regional need for a quality community on that side of the highway. We're fortunate that there's a traffic light, but there are some problems in that area. And, and by coming together with the residents and the stakeholders, we're fortunate enough to provide solutions if we all come together and approve this plan. And those solutions for, for this is, is improving Cherry Point Road. The county has started designing it, but there's no way to pay for it. Well, when developers come in, there's a way to pay for it. Those improvements will take away one of the most challenging issues that are existing when the school lets out and, and when the school, on the drop-off. We will be, we will be helping the, the school district with their strategic vision and balance. They think this is a great opportunity for the potential middle school. And, and that really was intriguing to them. They could not use the land on 170. It wasn't large enough for their needs. And, and by having a relationship with them from other projects, it was great that we could come together on this. Providing commercial services in that area is something that is, is very needed. I'm not sure how many of the commissioners have gone in that area recently, but now that Maile and Bluff is filled with people, River Oaks is starting to have houses in there, there are golf carts, bicyclists, people walking, they're everywhere. And we're trying to provide them a destination that's on that side of the highway that they can easily access through a walkable community. And, and the current place overlay is exactly what that is. So it was very exciting to kind of see all these visions come together for that. We're also providing solutions of internal traffic flow, things that don't go out onto 170, but stay within, which in turn will attract other families as we approve, if we're lucky enough, to get this commercial village on parcel A. That, most of the focus has been on parcel A and B through most of the discussions with most of the stakeholders here because of the, the traffic and the school. That's most of the things we've been trying to, to solve there. And so by having an internal traffic system, the out parcel between D and Cherry Point, we have a commitment that the, that the out parcel owner, if we approve this zoning, he will come in and commit the roadway to complete the frontage role that we're trying to, that we will put in our zoning, those points of contact. But he'll complete it if he comes through. So we have many access points and people and families that could potentially have their kids go to school, go to restaurants, go to after-school programs, go to the dry cleaners, the dentist, eat, eat at the restaurants. I already said that. All within walkable village, which is, which is very nice. To accomplish this, in meeting with the, with the stakeholders, we all had to agree to working together and what we don't like and what we like. What I liked is I didn't have to ask anybody to bend the rules. I didn't have to ask the place overlay to do something that it doesn't want to do, that doesn't happen. So I was very comfortable there. The adjacent communities have been there. They're growing and they're very involved. So together, we came up with some restrictions that I would place in a development agreement, if you allow us to go forward, that would protect their interests. And some of those are, they didn't want any car washes. They didn't want a storage facility. They didn't want any lodging facilities, no gas station. They wanted to make sure parcel B was a school or land use or open space only. They wanted the 75-foot buffer along the residential area. They wanted a max of the parcel A and B qualify on T four and T three for 430 residential units. We agreed to a cap of 258 units on those parcels. They also desired that there'd be no residential housing. I agreed to it. It will be 258 apartments. And so we agreed on many concepts that we want to put in a development agreement to lock down and make sure that everybody is secure, holding hands, moving forward together. So this is truly a community approach. That's all I have. I appreciate your time. I'll be here for any questions.
Thank you. Any questions? Mr. Swartz?
Do you want to wait until?
Oh, okay. We're going to wait, we're going to wait till we finish.
I'll let some of the stuff get pulled up, but I'll introduce myself first. Dylan Turner with Kim Lee Horn and did the TIA for the previous study that came before y'all. And we're working on this as well. So to first touch on what Richard was talking about, this is what the county's currently working on. I've got some preliminary design plans in. They're going through review with their staff. But you can see on this plan, you have the left turn lane into Oakwood Elementary School. That is not there today. So when you go there in the morning or at school dismissal, those, the cars back up on Cherry Point Road and start creeping back towards 170. And so as part of this plan, we're creating an opportunity for those cars to queue on Cherry Point within a turn lane. And so it gets them off of the mainline road, keeps them away from 170. So that's part of that plan. We're also providing significant storage for that outbound movement. So Cherry Point onto 170. Providing a lot more storage there. So that was an application from our previous traffic study. Would also be applicable to this traffic study as well as we go forward with those numbers. So with what Kevin hit on earlier, what we've done so far with this is we've identified with this new development, we're adding the new parcel D1, I believe is what it's on the plan. There, we've seen an increase in the trip gen. So before we get any approvals from DOT or anything, we're going to have to update that. that, the previous traffic study we had. Because it's more trips, the infrastructure we had planned in the previous, uh, traffic study will be applicable and we've gotta check, do we need, do we need more? So that's one of the things that we'll do as we move forward with this new TIA. Um, will you go to the next slide? So this starts building the story of how does this plan operate with the future one-seventy corridor plans that Beaufort County is currently adopting? So the design will be such and constructed such that we can transition from the pre-one-seventy improvements to post. So this is the beginning of, of what we would do. We would take away the left turn from Cherry Point onto one-seventy, cause that's part of that plan. And then the next slide, our next one, is the full. So we'd have the dual rights, have a little bit of median, um, it could be additional stacking, we'd probably make that concrete to discourage cars from going, uh, towards one-seventy, you know, if any queuing were to happen there. Um, one of the additional things that we could do, uh, that the, uh, design team for the one-seventy corridor started looking at, right now, southbound one-seventy onto Cherry Point, the single lane, we have a receiving lane, so we could potentially do duals there to help with that signal as well, um, for some future capacity at the intersection. Uh, so what we're saying is, the ultimate plan for Cherry Point that we're working through, uh, works in the here and now, and then it also works with those, those plans in the future for the one-seventy corridor study. Um, the next is the PowerPoint slides. Here we go. Um, all right, so what you're looking at here is pretty much a stick figure of, of what the lanes are today. Um, and then you go to the next slide, we start building the story. Okay, here's what Maile and Bluff and their traffic study and they had to do, so that's the purple arrows. The next one, uh, Okati Village, which I think is now called River Oaks, I believe, is what they've got to do with their traffic study. So you'll see the orange arrows. So, um, the dual lefts and the through on Cherry Point towards Pearlstein. Um, next slide is the Speedway. So that's the gas station. I don't think that has been constructed yet, but this is all stuff we had to consider when we did the previous version of the TIA. Um, you'll see the separation of the left and through right on Pearlstein, so that's a new lane there. And then finally, if you go here, um, we're adding the new lineage on Cherry Point, which creates that additional through lane we talked about, which would drop off at Okati Elementary School. Um, we would have a new traffic signal at Riverwalk Boulevard, which DOT approved in the previous iteration. Um, so you have that new traffic signal, the new access, uh, Street B was on here, uh, which is a right-in, right-out, would have a deceleration lane. Um, but this did not include the new parcel, parcel D-one. D-one has a right-in, right-out as well between Cherry Point and Maile and Bluff. That would have to have a right-turn decel as well. And then we'd have to look at Maile and Bluff and those operations, is there anything additional that's needed in this short term between now and when the one-seventy plan implements that we would need to do? DOT would require us to do that. Um, one of the things too that this allows is with the new signal at Riverwalk, is that more connectivity for residents. So if, if Cherry Point is backed up, um, you now have the ability to go through the development, um, to go over to the new signal as a new, um, new, uh, way and, and route to go through the development as well, uh, to help with that traffic signal timing there. Um, and another thing too is, is with this, so we saw it in those concept plans, what we're doing, it is in line with that ultimate one-seventy corridor study. So what we're doing can be, uh, translated into that. But I have to say too, uh, if you go back to that last one, sorry, um, let's see, I think it's the last slide on this, um, slide five, but I don't know if it froze. So, uh, uh, but I do want to say is with those red arrows, this, this slide here, this has gotta be confirmed with the new TIS as we go forward with the development agreement with y'all. So I'm not gonna sit here and say that this is the ultimate, this is what it will be. There might be more because we have more trips and we have another access point. So I know for sure the right-in, right-out between Cherry Point and Maile and Bluff will have a decel lane, it'll look just like site, uh, Street B, um, in this diagram and, and that would have to go before Beaufort County and SC DOT as well. And yeah, that's kind of all for traffic before we do all the questions and everything.
I know we were gonna wait till the end for all the questions, but since you have the slide up, that's gonna add an additional four lights along one-seventy, right?
It's gonna do what now?
Add an additional four lights or three lights.
Uh-uh, no. It's one, it's one new, it's one new light. So with our development, so the only, the only new light would be at Riverwalk. Uh, Tide Watch, uh, already has a signal. And then Pritchard Point has the planned, uh, signal with Maile and Bluff that was in their traffic study. So this is only one new light.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening, um, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. My name is Walter Nester and I'm with the local offices of Burn Foreman Law Firm, and as noted, I'm the land use, uh, attorney on this. Um, development agreements are really a tool, uh, set forth in the Comprehensive Planning Act. I'm, I'm confident that planning commissioners are familiar with development agreements. Um, they, uh, confirm for a municipality commitments of a real estate developer and a property owner in terms of what it, what's going to be done, uh, some of the things that we've heard tonight in terms of traffic, some of the other infrastructure. So it confirms the infrastructure that's gonna be constructed or required to be constructed by the landowner, uh, for the benefit of the municipality. It provides for timing for the construction of those improvements. And then for the landowner and the developer, it vests those development rights. So the, what gets approved in a development agreement is what, uh, is, what, what will remain and cannot be changed for the term of the development agreement unless certain standards, standards are met. So it's, it's a very good planning tool. It enhances the ability to plan developments such as, such as this and, and to, uh, again, confirm for the, for the municipality what a developer's gonna do and when it's going to be done. The development agreement can also be used as a tool to address concerns of, of landowners. Um, as Mr. Schwartz said, uh, he's met with the local property owners, they've, um, they've alerted him to his, uh, their concerns, and those are the types of concerns that can be set forth and addressed in a development agreement. Um, Mr. Merchant also identified some areas that he believed that should be set forth in a development agreement, and we believe that those things are, are something that could be, uh, placed in the development agreement. There were some questions, Ms. McMillan, you had a question about timing, right? So a development agreement is approved like an ordinance. And when it's approved, when it's final approval, it's gone through a, um, a number of meetings, right? With your land use committee, with members of council, members of staff, and identify those things that are gonna be in the final version of the development agreement. And because it, it is somewhat contingent upon the zoning approval, they get approved at the same time. And that's the reason why, because you can't expect the landowner or the developer, nor can we expect the county to agree to a development unless it's being approved at the same time. And so they're kind of conditioned upon each other and, and they're done, uh, at the same time. Mr. Pappas, you indicated that, uh, can you put conditions on the, the commission's approval? You certainly can do that, obviously, but we would, we would ask that you be careful about those conditions because we have a number of different parties. We've got, certainly have the, the adjacent property owners, but we have the Beaufort County School District and, uh, and the current landowners. Mr. Schwartz doesn't own the property yet. So we don't, if we have a, if we have a condition that gets imposed by, by the planning commission, and it's not something that's agreed to by a third party, we'd have to come back to the planning commission and, and do this all over again. We'd ask that the conditions that are, that are at issue, we're certainly willing to, to hear what those conditions are, but staff has identified conditions, Mr. Schwartz has identified conditions. I, I expect that you'll hear from other, other requests for conditions as, as well. But again, my request is to let's be careful about that because if we impose your approval on some condition that we don't know if everybody here agrees to, we have to start all over again. And with that, I'm glad to answer any, any questions the commissioners may have. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so we have an opportunity here for rounded questions to any of the presenters. Are there questions that who would like to start?
I guess this is a general question, um, vis a vis the referendum in November. How much of your thinking and planning, and particularly the one-seventy improvements, are, are, are based on that referendum passing? That's number one. To my understanding, there's nobody here from the school, uh, board or the school administration here. So if the referendum doesn't pass, is the school committee still, uh, committed to, um, doing the land swap? For the, and, and how important is the land swap to this proposal?
It's a great question.
So, um, do I need to introduce myself again?
Sure, thanks.
Okay, yeah, so Dylan Turner with Kimmy Horn. Um, so as far as the referendum goes, so what our traffic study previously had and will have to have in this, uh, next iteration is a case of what the road looks like without the referendum and with, so it'll be dynamic to show both cases. So, um, I mean, if it doesn't pass, it's still gonna be a plan out there that would come up again at some point, but the timing becomes a little bit more long-term. So we would have to have in our traffic study what the results would be without the road and referendum, so without the widening of one-seventy and the super street. So we'll have both of those in the traffic study that gets submitted.
And that, oh, thank you, but that is not in play, you haven't done that yet. You're waiting till post-November, post-referendum to see what?
As far, as far as the traffic study goes, we're just getting ready for the development agreement as, as part of that. But previously, we had it that way as well, where we had both scenarios in there. Uh, made it maybe a little bit more confusing with people not in the, the traffic world, but it was present in that. So it's not necessarily waiting until the referendum.
Great, thanks. I mean, one of my greater concerns is that there are so many assumptions that as a developer and, um, we haven't even heard from the neighbors and so on, we're dealing with so many assumptions. We, I mean, me, maybe my colleagues are a ton brighter than I am, but you know, my head is spinning by how many assumptions that we have, um, to consider, um, as we go forward.
Understood.
That was one piece of it.
Yep, understood.
And no one can predict the referendum.
Right.
Ms. McMillan, I just, Walter Nester again, I wanted to speak to your comment or question about the school district. Of course, we're not here on behalf of the school district, but there's no condition on the land swap, on the agreement relative to the land swap. There's no condition that doesn't contemplate the sales tax referendum.
Okay, so, but the, I, I think my colleague, um, asked whether or not in years to come, whether there could be a change that the school district might, you know, revert back and, and have an agreement to develop homes there and not have a school there. That's unclear to me.
Thank you, and I, and I did hear Mr. Ross's question, and, and that's again, something that gets placed in the development agreement, cause the school district is the owner of the, would be the owner of the property, they're a participant and, and, and sign, signer, right, of the development agreement. So that would be a commitment that would have to be made by the school district, uh, and that's contemplated by Mr. Schwartz and, uh, as I understand it, based on his discussions with the school district.
Great, thank you.
Yes, John?
I, I had a few questions regarding the, um, zoning map amendment document that was submitted and prepared by Whitmer Jones and Kiefer. I'll let you all decide who the best person to answer as I walk through these. And I, I apologize, some of these are gonna sound a little nitpicky, but I, for my purpose, I just wanna make sure that we're all on the same page in terms of what we're dealing with here. The first just had to do under section four, the regulating plan and village place type overlay. It makes reference to Okati Bluff, which I assume must have been an earlier name for this development, um, rather than Okati Landing.
Yes, I would assume that's a type of that.
And then it also talked about, um, the transit zones being included were T-four Neighborhood Center and T-four Hamlet Center, um, in addition to T-three Neighborhood, but I'm assuming there is no T-three Hamlet Center Transit Zone being proposed.
It's T-three and, and yet, yes, it's two that's being proposed right now, so.
Okay.
So the plan should reflect that, but we'll get the text cleaned up to make sure it marries up.
Under Exhibit B, your natural resource plan, um, there's a wetland D that's noted on the plan to be mitigated, but then the wetland also shows a twenty-foot buffer. Um, I'm assuming that that wetland's going away altogether with, the phrase mitigated, your?
You're looking at, um, wetland D?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, the wetland D we are gonna mitigate for and the reason, it appears when we took a look at it, it's an old borrow pit, so it's not wonderful. What we're proposing are, uh, you can see all the green dots all around it where we have really nice live oaks that are, um, twenty-four inches and greater. We wanna preserve some of that land and mitigate for the wetland, so we're looking at doing that to, uh, save the really nice live oak canopies and that wetland, which is a borrow pit, would be something we wanna mitigate for. So that is the intent.
And by mitigate, you're just, that wetland won't exist anymore, you'll be doing something to?
Yeah, we'd have to get a permit to do that, um, but yes, that would be the intent is, um, to counterbalance it by savings, preserving some other natural resource areas.
That one got answered. Um, the transit zoning overlay Exhibit C, um, and I don't have that in front of me, so hopefully this makes sense. It shows a, um, parcels A and B having thirty-three point five acres and parcel four, thirty-six point two-one. But it doesn't appear that T-four is being proposed on parcel B, so it was unclear when it said, T-four parcel A and B is thirty-three point five acres. Is that just a?
T-four A and B is, um, those parcels together are thirty, thirty-eight point nine-eight, so T-three parcel four. Thought they were both T-four and C and T-three. So the parcel A on, why is that? I'll have to look at that and figure out why that isn't adding up. It should, but we have a, um, yeah, I'll double-check those numbers. I see where you're looking.
Well, and for me, I think I just wanted to make sure that T-four wasn't being proposed anywhere on parcel B, it's all on parcel A, is that correct?
It is all on parcel A, yes.
Okay. Um, this goes back to an earlier comment I had with Rob for the regulating plan. Um, Note Three actually states that buildings and parking locations are shown for representation purpose, but obviously on the regulating plan, as it's shown, there are no buildings or parking shown, which is why I was referring to the?
The sketch plan.
The sketch plan, um, which helped me to better understand what your intentions were in terms of generally where you were putting buildings versus locating parking, et cetera.
Right, and I think we can have a sketch plan, I think we just have the disclaimer, you know, because obviously when the, when those plans come in, they're gonna change a little bit. But as Mr. Merchant was saying, they have to follow the, they're only allowed to be a certain square footage or certain size, so, um, as far as getting big footprints and, um, these T-three and T-four zonings, that's not how the code is written.
So really that Note Three probably doesn't belong in the regulating plan, is that correct?
What, Note Three being?
Note Three on the regulating plan says buildings and parking locations are shown for representation purposes.
I, I think that's, um, I think it's fine to have that, you, you need a note up there if you're gonna show buildings and if you're gonna show a sketch.
But your regulation plan doesn't have any buildings or parking shown.
It does, it doesn't, so we can remove that note and just put it on the sketch plan, is what we do.
Okay, I, I, I just wanted to make sure I was dealing with apples and apples.
I see what you're talking about.
Um, let's see. The pedestrian shed shown on the regulating plan, I couldn't quite understand what that second pedestrian shed was trying to indicate it. I wasn't clear where the five-minute walk was supposed to be coming from.
There's a five-minute walk from number seven, which is the park, and then there's a five-minute walk that would be, um, coming out of the, um, number two, which is more of the village park up front. So there's two pedestrian sheds.
That first one made sense, cause it looked like it was coming from your kind of non-residential area, the second one was what was confusing.
And then the other one's coming from like the, um, there's a park at number seven, if you looked at the sketch plan. Um, so it's coming from that. But we can make that a little bit easier to follow, um, as we, uh, when we make some of these.
Well, and part of the reason I was asking, particularly with the addition of? Well, and part of the reason I was asking, particularly with the addition of parcel D, it seems like we're really dealing with kind of a linear pedestrian shed, because you're anticipating trying to make that connection with the residential development on the other side of Cherry Point and Mayland.
Yes and no, but I think one of the county comments was that to look at a third pedestrian shed in that area, I think was one of the comments in the first sixteen.
That's what it was, yeah.
Yeah, so that's a comment we have to address from the county.
That was answered, sorry. The other questions I had had to do with the traffic impact analysis.
I'll let Dylan jump up and answer those for you.
And I apologize, I know just enough about traffic to be dangerous, so. I couldn't tell from looking at any of the scenarios that you were including the future school site in terms of trip generation, is that correct?
It was not included at the request of the school, 'cause they don't know how many students they're gonna have there. They don't know the when, who, the what. And so I had initially planned to have that in there, but the determination with the school was, when they go forward with the middle school, that they would have to do a traffic study at that time, 'cause there was no assumptions they could provide me for the size of that school.
And then, I think we touched on this, so I apologize having you repeat, in terms of timeline for the traffic or roadway improvements. I know with the original Cherry Point, all of the 170 improvements were planned but not funded. I'm assuming that hasn't changed in the years.
There's been a change, but not here. So closer towards the 278 side, there are some short-term improvements that are actually gonna be starting this year. But the stuff at Cherry Point still doesn't have a funding or a construction date. And that's been in discussions with Beaufort County.
And then the frontage road that you have running across parcels A and D, that I think Mr. Schwartz had said that there had been a commitment from the owner of the parcel that they would extend there and make that connection. And so we don't really know, in terms of timing, when that would happen, in terms of being able to complete that connection on the frontage road, is that?
That's a correct assumption, yep.
And then the last question I had was the, the new signal that's being proposed.
At Riverwalk?
At Riverwalk. Does South Carolina DOT, in terms of their warrants, if it's like most DOTs that I've worked with, unfortunately, it's like, until you've built it and the accidents start happening, that's when you determine that it's warranted.
We could look at somewhere in the county to prove that at Oldfield, right?
I thought that was the case.
It's, we have to build and have the volume in most cases. There are a few exceptions, so I can't say this won't be one, but in most cases, the volume has to be there before you can construct the traffic signal.
Thank you.
I haven't thought this question out thoroughly, but the school just specifically said they didn't want a traffic for the future.
They just weren't able to provide me with numbers to put into the memo, because.
Why would they agree to the land swap to begin with?
I absolutely cannot speak for them for that, I don't know that answer. So the only thing that I could say is, when we went through the initial discussions, we sat over here with a school district, actually I've called into that one, and asked about that, and they're like, one, right now it's being thrown out as a middle school, but that wasn't even a definite at that time, and they didn't have a timeline on when. And so I don't know if it's five years from now, 10 years from now, I'd have to have them here to speak to that.
Obviously, yeah.
So I just, I don't, I don't have an answer for that.
Okay.
Anything else for traffic from anyone?
Any other questions for any of the gentlemen?
All right, thank you all.
Thank you. I think we're ready for public comments, I've got a number here. I'm gonna just call your name and let's say, as you come up, please, again, reduce yourself and be aware of a three-minute clock. Kristen, would you turn the clock on, please? First name I have here is, I apologize if I can't read your writing, but I'm gonna try to. Nikki Maxey? Or is that Nikki?
I'm a bad writer. Thank you, I'm Nikki Maxey, I live in Bluffton, South Carolina. I own a company, Christie's International Real Estate. And I'm just here on behalf of the project, I'm extremely impressed with Mr. Schwartz's plan. I think it's very much needed. Our agents get people all the time looking for housing. We have no real good housing, no affordable housing for people, no rentals. Our inventory is terrible, so I think the project is great, it checks a lot of boxes. I think that whole development is really cool. You can golf cart into downtown, into the little area, and I think it's, it might be another, like another little Bluffton downtown, so I think it's awesome.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Jim Kapdick?
Hey, yes, Jim Kapdick. And fortunate to live in the Alljoy area with my wife and be a young professional working here in Bluffton. And Nikki hinted on that, but this project can really be, you know, that same sort of development, New Riverside or Old Town Bluffton. And for young people working, we can't afford to get in gated communities and have that community that work-life balance. And so I think it's a great opportunity, and I hope y'all approve it, thank you.
Thank you. You're with me here. Derek Stetter?
Hello, my name's Derek Stetter. My family and I live at 169 Cherry Point Road. I spoke here about a year ago when we went through the previous iteration. I got four items, and I'll speak quickly, there's no three minutes. One, the development agreement. Public input is very important with the development agreement. My only concern is, when it comes to that point, you have three minutes and only five people can speak. So I don't know, it's just, to me, that's not public input. Number two, density, it's too high. What they're proposing is way too high for this area. They're proposing, if my math is correct, 59 acres, they want roughly 382 housing units, living units, that's too high for this area. I'm also concerned about the traffic analysis. I'm not sure if they included the build-out at River Oaks when they did this traffic analysis. That whole area is gonna be, I think about, two-thirds of it is still not even started, so that traffic's gonna be adding to this proposed traffic, which I hope doesn't pass. Number three, actually, traffic was three. Number four is the rezoning criteria. Number eight on the rezoning criteria, I would also like to say that I disagree with Beaufort County's planning department. Number eight says, "Will not result in adverse impacts on the natural environment, including but not limited to water, air noise, stormwater management, wildlife, vegetation, wetlands, and natural functioning of the environment." How is cutting down 30, 40, 50 acres of trees, removing wetlands, not adversely affecting the environment? We cannot harvest in our backyards because the water quality is so poor. Why is it so poor? Because of overdevelopment. I understand development's gonna happen, it's gotta be responsible, and I don't think this is responsible at all. So I urge you not to pass this proposal, thank you.
Thank you. Pete Schramm?
Thank you for allowing me to speak. My wife and I have lived on 170 or off of 170 for 24 years. So we've seen the effects of traffic and population growth personally. We were 22 years plus in Riverbend, and we moved to Mayland Bluff for a variety of reasons, and we've been there over a year now. And I'm here to tell you that personally, the impact has been tremendous in negative manners, and I'll give you some examples. We came here with the idea that we wanted to be part of a community, and it was important for us to volunteer our time and our talents in that area. My wife and I are both artists, and so, and I also have a strong interest in nature. So I went to Clemson, got a degree in natural science, so I could be part of the activities of teaching people at the Coastal Discovery Museum about the natural environment. I've spent countless hours out on the beach in Defuski and other islands, educating the public. As artists, we were heavily involved in the Art League, you know, in Hilton Head, and in the SOBA, Society of Bluffton Artists in Bluffton, as well as we're master docents at the Telfair Museum in Savannah, Georgia, and we've been there for over 10 years. We are giving up all of that because we cannot reliably get to appointments to serve those needs from, because of the traffic. It starts with 170, and it just goes right on into, because we have to get on to 278, we're just, you know, at a point where we can't do anything. I was the artist in residence for the Beaufort County Library System for this summer, and I participated in activities associated with that in both Bluffton and in Ladies Island. And I had classes of 25, 30 people came to, wanted to hear about what I had to say about art. And every one of the people who came to the Bluffton facility complained about the traffic. They couldn't get there, you know, it was a 10 o'clock class, but they couldn't get there in time. And this was repeated and repeated. Other people that we are closely in association with, who have been in similar circumstances about as being volunteers, are also thinking seriously about giving up. I urge you to think about what that means. To us, it's a tremendous loss. We're, our quality of life is going to the toilet, frankly, excuse my French. But I just wanted you to know that, thank you.
Thank you, Mr.. Felice Darce?
Good evening. Felice Lamarka. We, my husband and I own 149 Cherry Point, and thank you very much for your service, your work, this is not easy. Beaufort County. Was here a year ago, and here I am today. I'll be very honest with you, our neighborhood is split. We came together and met with Richard Schwartz, and we welcomed him, and we appreciate the fact that he has made us a part of this development. We have many cautions, we have many doubts. The planning department has got to work with us. There was not one thing in your proposal to the commission that Richard talked about that were our conditions to support it. So thank you, Mr. Pappas, for urging staff and everyone to work on what's very serious to us in keeping our support and working together and making this work for everyone. Why did we choose to work with Mr. Schwartz? As much as I'd like to say, Richard, it was your personality, it isn't. We know this county does nothing but upzone. That's what it's all been about for 29 years that I've lived here. And I've said this many times, I do not know who's getting what, who's making money. It isn't me, but it's killing the county. So that's my personal opinion, I will stick to that. But I will work very hard with Mr. Schwartz to make something quality and good happen, because county council is gonna upzone and make this happen. Mark my words.
Thank you. Scott Daniel?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank y'all for your time, I really appreciate the way y'all handled this last year and the way you're handling it this year, your attendance, it's not lost on us. I'm a Cherry Point resident, and we have been speaking to Richard. One of the first things I wanted to say is, if you go to their conditions, number one, it says, "Is consistent with and furthers the goals and policies of the comprehensive plan and the purpose of this development code." So the comprehensive plan is fairly important. And it says, yes, it is consistent with the comprehensive plan, although the comprehensive plan states the future land use of these properties is to be rural. That's what the comprehensive plan says, it is to be rural. It also expresses for the option to create a village place type. So the comprehensive plan states it's supposed to stay rural, and here we are again, one year later, fighting the same fight. Until two days ago, we, I didn't know about the land swap. I didn't know that there were gonna be these proposed businesses and houses up there across from Cherry Point. It's kinda like, to me, a shell game. We're gonna, which shell is the overdevelopment gonna be on? Is it gonna be by your house, is it gonna be by this house, is it gonna be over here? We're just flipping and we're flopping, we're still looking to overdevelop everything. During the county's presentation, he says that he believed it was suitable for school use. We'd like to guarantee that the swap is suitable for school use and that the school, be it middle school or lower, because the last thing we want is a high school with a high school football game right across from our house. And we have the same concerns over, all of a sudden, it gets converted by the school district. We can't build what we thought we were gonna build, here you go, have it back, build whatever you wanna build. So that's one of our concerns. And we have had earnest discussions with Richard. One of my concerns, though, was, in an email he sent to us, we were asking where the guarantees were that we were seeking, and he said, and we were talking about the, he's talking about giving us his word. He said, "It's not my word that counts," this is a direct quote from his email, "it's what I've committed to that will be in the development agreement. If you can't support me, then I should not put any restrictions or caps on density in the agreement. We do it together, or we don't." So kind of, I'm sorry, but don't poke me in the eye. Millions for defense, not one cent for tribute. So I'm not gonna base my support because you're threatening to pull your agreements from us if we don't. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I believe I have one, no, I think that was it. Did I miss anybody?
We're back here.
The one way back, yeah, please come up, I don't.
Yes, thank you.
I did misplace your, obviously.
No, I appreciate that, thank you, my name is Joshua Howar, I actually live in Mayland Bluff as well. I really appreciate everybody coming out here tonight, and I appreciate the commission taking a moment to listen to us. As residents in this immediate area, we have several concerns when it comes to upzoning, and we are a little bit split. I have been working with my community, I've actually submitted the conditional letter of recommendation to the commission for this meeting, and I just wanted to go ahead and kinda iterate that a little bit. I think there is a need for commercial space in this area. I really like the concept of a restaurant, a dentist, a doctor's office, a habersham kinda feel, drive down there, get something to eat, go do some stuff, enjoy an open space. And then I really like the idea of having a middle school or lower, some kind of civic building or civic use that we can all take advantage of. And I think that's a great idea for this location. What concerns me, outside of what we brought to the county council and to the planning commission last year, when we had the same discussion in these zones around us, is not only do we have infrastructure constraints, not only are there tax issues that are gonna come out of increasing the apartments, increasing the residents moving to the area, into the county specifically, is the development agreement. And we've heard a little bit back and forth. And we've heard a little bit back and forth on, well, when do you have the development agreement? When does it get codified? When does it get attached to the zoning? I find it a little disappointing that this material wasn't presented to the planning commission. I find it a little disappointing that we have a lot of assumptions that are made in the pack and what was presented, what is submitted. To make your decision as adequately as possible, I believe you need all the information and all of the agreements and all the discussions that are happening between the different interested parties to really have a good sense of what's going on and what we need to do, to commit to, to make this work for everyone. And I just wanted to take a quick second to reiterate on the record the letter. I do think that if the commitments are made from the development agreement that we were promised, I do see some infrastructure improvements for the expanded exits onto the traffic. I do see the institutional zoning carve out for the school as an improvement. There are some ecological considerations. I find that good. I also agree with the comment that if you're going to cut out wetlands and then put a little bit of wetlands back, it's not really ecological preservation. Walkability is great. Unfortunately, Maile and Bluff's not within that pedestrian shed, so we don't really get the benefit of the walkability. I'm still going to have to drive my car down to enjoy any of these nice facilities that'll be implemented. And then, with the last couple of seconds, I wanted to jump into the traffic study. This is the first time I had heard that this was going to be a right out only at a Cherry Point, and that was kind of what we were looking at. I find that extremely disappointing, extremely concerning, because onto 170, our community specifically needs the ability to take a safe left turn. So, I would ask that that is something that's considered when we get to the next level, if you do support this moving forward. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you. And that's all the public comments that I have. Is there a merchant or any of you would like to make a final comment before we bring this up? No? All right, well, then, if there are no further questions of anybody, let's bring this up to the dees. Any discussion?
I have a question that I, it might be to Rob. You know, Mr. Howar, is that your name?
Yes.
Yeah, Mr. Howar. So, this, your letter, I received this evening, but it's dated September 1. And from the Cherry Point neighborhood, and I remember Ms. Lamarka from last year and several folks there, that's dated September 2. I got these tonight, like, at the beginning of the meeting. So, I guess I'd like to know, did you send them to the planning department? Did the planning department, you mentioned that they didn't include them. I'm just confused. If that could be clarified, either by, you know, Mr. Marchant or you, that would be great. Thanks.
Yes, Mrs. McCallum. That was provided to Richard Schwartz, and he did confirm that he had sent them in. We do have a communication email from him clarifying today that those were omitted. I believe the reason was they just weren't relevant to the general discussion.
I'm sorry, they were omitted? Is that?
They were omitted.
And that was, Mr. Schwartz said that?
He said, he forwarded me an email confirming from a Kimberly, I believe. I don't know the last name, that they were, in fact, omitted. But he did provide them to the county staff, I believe.
Thank you. I mean, I bring it up, I'm not casting blame, but these two letters, in terms of public input, and this group has been known a year ago for giving terrific public input and considered public input, and they've also clearly worked with the proposed owner, I think he's under contract for this property. So, I think that's great. And Mr. Nestor said, everyone really is working together. So, that is a very great thing. So, I'm just puzzled why tonight is the first night that we've seen any of these conditions. That's all. That's my point.
And to add to that, it's very difficult to make snap decisions based on somebody on rent.
It's highly difficult. I mean, it's really unfair of us.
May I approach?
Sure. Well, it's up to you.
Sorry, Mr. Pappas.
That's over. That's just my approach. Now that I'm running the meeting. I'm sorry. That's okay.
When we received the agenda, which it was available, I think I was able to pull it up October 1st or 2nd. And, you know, the daunting size of it. I went through it quickly to begin with and saw the letter from the school, which doesn't mention a middle school, excuse me. And then, there were no letters from Mr. Howar and myself, which you see the dates. Those are the dates we got them to Mr. Schwartz by his request. Several emails back and forth with Mr. Schwartz. Why are you not submitting our letters? And he actually said, "I thought you and Josh pulled them." And I said, "Why would we do that?" And then, he got back to us and said that, and I think the person's name was Robin, had said she did submit them to you separately. We don't know why.
All right. Thank you.
Okay. So, I did receive that with the application. I just did not put it in the staff report because it is correspondence from the public. That's why it was sent today. And it not included in the staff report.
And was there a reason why we couldn't have received them earlier as maybe not even an addendum to the report or to the agenda?
No, I apologize. I should have sent them earlier.
Okay.
May I say something?
Who's speaking?
Chairman Pappas.
Sorry. Yes, Mr. Schwartz, please.
Thank you. A lot of the angst that has come out of this process is we have come down the road. It was just mentioned, an email that I had with the customer, with the landowner. A lot of this has been kind of like about the process and the development agreement. I was unable to give my commitment in any word format except the emails and the negotiations with the property owners due to the process. I said the development agreement goes along to the vote. And as you know, these groups are apprehensive from what has happened before. And so, my hands were tied, and I believe we all got sideways about it with no solution. On the third meeting, I actually asked Senator Tom Davis to come and observe the meeting. And he gave his, he said he would review the development agreement for the property owners to make sure that the commitments I'm making would flow through. I only bring this up is because there'll be other times that there'll be rezonings, and you have a very tough job, and you don't have all the facts as it was brought up. But I've promised these landowners and the stakeholders that we're going to do this together. But I didn't have any format in which I can, in writing, give to them as part of the process. It's just a process comment that caused us all a lot of heartburn that we probably didn't need to have. We were all really comfortable that we kept the density, we agreed on the restrictions, we agreed on the buffers, and we were all comfortable about what we were going to do. And unfortunately, you don't know until now what we promised each other to make this happen. And this is a community, we're not doing this in a vacuum, we're doing this holding hands. And so, it might be something that is suggested to be part of the process on future rezonings that, is there a list of conditions? Is there a list of agreements between parties? Just something to add to it, sir. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schwartz.
Can I ask Mr. Schwartz a question? Is this something that you normally do when you're buying and developing properties is you speak with an electorate official behind closed doors to figure out the right way to go before you present it to the local residents?
Which elected official?
You said you spoke with Senator Davis, is that correct?
He was interested because this is a high-profile property within his district. He was not there on my behalf. And he made that clear to the residents.
Okay.
He was not there in support.
All right. All right.
He represented us all.
Very well. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm sorry if I misled you in any way on that, those comments, sir.
Thank you.
Further comments before we go into a motion? Any further discussion, questions you'd like to ask? Have a dialogue?
Just a quick one. Kristen, can you pull up the final reduced conflict plan for Cherry Point that I think was shown during Mr. Turner's presentation? It's the one that shows the improvements to Cherry Point overlaid on an aerial image. So, is this, because it was something Mr. Howar said that I didn't pick up on. So, is the final plan for Cherry Point that there would be no left turn?
That is with the county's project with AECom, that that is the recommendation that happens at SC 170 in Cherry Point. And so, what's just off screen here on the overall plan is the U-turn bulb. That one is a signalized U-turn bulb. If I'm remembering correctly, I'm pretty sure it is. Some of them along the corridor are not signaled, I believe this one is signaled. And it would have a big enough U-turn radius for buses.
Do you know, is part of that just to reduce the number of cycles of the light?
Yeah, phasing. You've got it. Are you sure you're not a traffic engineer?
Is this a question, is this, when there's six lanes, three looks like there's, this is six lane?
It is six lane, yep. So, it has an additional lane.
So, this is like five, ten years out.
Yeah.
We don't know.
Yep.
It's a six-lane structure, it's going to take hundreds of millions of dollars to build.
That's right, yeah. Yeah.
We have a study currently underway by one of our... Can you speak up a bit, Captain? We have a study currently underway by one of our consultants. They've been working on it very, very hard. They've been taking a look at what's been going on in the area with respect to proposed developments, not only on the Beaufort County side, but on the Hardyville side, too. So, we know that it's hundreds of thousands of trips that are proposed to be generated if the developments are built out. You talk about assumptions. So, the whole traffic, what we call transportation modeling that we do, it's all built off assumptions. It builds off, excuse me, origin, destination scripts, and developments that are approved. So, yes, so, when we look at 2035, so, right now, we're in 2024. So, the AE study is, I believe, is looking at either 2035 or 2045. So, as you well know, without any developments, it's something just called, it's called annual growth. Like, if no developments were to happen, the traffic still would necessarily grow annually based off percentages. Because in 1990, it was just much traffic, and 2000, it was just much traffic, and 2010, it was just much traffic. So, based off the current trend, even if certain developments don't happen, traffic is going to grow. And that is included in their traffic impact study. They have a no-build situation where traffic is already, excuse me, accumulated without the development. And then, there's traffic on top of that to show, okay, what it would be like if the developments were to come. So, we hired AECom to take a look at our corridor. And it's a plan that is being looked at by multiple stakeholders, including SC DOT. It's a SC DOT road. And based on the volumes that is being projected, our study will propose what you see there. So, you know, we are hopeful that if this was implemented, then in terms of the commuting from northern Beaufort County to southern Beufort County, and traffic coming from Hilton Head and traffic coming from Hardyville, all of these cars using this corridor, once it's widened to three lanes in either direction, the study will show that if we use this particular scenario, the flow on traffic will be beneficial to the general public, given, you know, our seasonal, our seasonable, our seasonal changes, you know, with our tourism, and also given our commuter AM/PM peaks. So, you know, when you limit the left turns, you reduce significant amount of turning conflicts. So, it's safer for traffic, of course, because you don't have the 90-degree crashes that could happen. But with respect to the flow of traffic and the times that you wait at a light, this particular scenario is better for the general track, the general public.
Excuse me, the U-turn is better than being able to turn left?
Right.
Down the road and turn around?
Right. So, I mean, traditionally speaking, we all are used to what a traffic like. Before, you've seen a roundabout in the United States, they had lots of roundabouts in Europe. So, traditionally speaking, when we saw a roundabout in the United States, you know, it took some getting used to. But we realized that it's benefits to the roundabout as well, because the severity of crashes are extremely minimized because when cars get to the roundabout, they slow down and then they go around. So, there's benefits, there's pros and cons to different types of things. So, there is a pro and a con to this particular super street concept, but it works for what we needed to work for. So, that's what's being proposed with this AECom study. Just so you know, this is strictly for informational purposes, it's not a final study that's been approved by anybody yet, but that's what's being proposed.
All right. Thank you. Other questions? All right, comments up here. Let's see if we can keep it up here as we get...
I guess the concern that I have is the right in, the right out. This doesn't, if I understand correctly, does not take into consideration the school, if the school ever goes in. If the school goes in, then you need another traffic impact study, another millions of dollars to improve this infrastructure. And being a lifelong driver, I don't find any safety in not being able to take a left at a light, going up the road a hundred feet and trying to cross over two lanes to take a left into two other lanes of traffic. I don't see the safety in that at all. I see that causing more accidents, to be honest with you. That's an opinion.
Others?
Just got a couple of comments, and I've read through this a couple of times. I really want to see the village-type overlays take place. I really think it's important in the right areas and in the right times. It's still just a very congested area. I don't care how many things we throw at this. I can't see it getting any better. There's just not a magic wand that's going to get waved because of a study that's going to be done on assumptions and looking back historically and trying to look forward. Maybe I'm just very narrow-minded, and I guess I am. Overall, I think there's still too many open-ended variables to the presentations that were made tonight. I think there were things that were omitted rather either willfully or negligently, I don't know. But I just don't feel that if common sense were to play in this, the vision to limit the growth in this area, I think we just need to have more concern for the residents and not for the developers, the people that have already bought into these neighborhoods. And just because the comprehensive plan says that it's okay, it doesn't mean we should do it without looking at it and how it will affect long-term. Those are just my thoughts.
All right. Thank you. Others?
Slight matter of timing, to go back to one of John's points, you, I don't know whether or if there is going to be a regulating plan coming forward or a regulating sketch. That was not made clear to me. Did you get an answer to that question?
Not completely.
Okay. I mean, for example, I really loved your point of view that there could be, you know, a unit, an X, on a piece of land. But in fact, that X might turn out to be four littler buildings, you know, adding up to more or less the same square footage with parking delineated, but that's not what we were given. So, it's illustri, I think the point that I took from you is that we want less illustrative and more regulated. Is that your, was that what you're getting at?
In part, I mean, between what we heard tonight and staff's comments, it's hard for me to feel like I'm making a reasonable decision, because as other commissioners have said, the information doesn't seem to all be congealed yet in one place. Where I'm, where I'm kind of at is, I could go two ways. One is, we ask to have this additional information that everybody's been talking about put in place so that we're able to have that in order to make the decision. The other part is, you know, a year ago when we had this conversation.
Sure.
Trying not to turn my back on you guys, it's just a time to...
We're used to it.
But I mean, a, a big part of, oh, thank you. A big part of the decision that we made a year ago had to do with infrastructure.
Yeah.
Right, yeah.
Absolutely.
And there are still a lot of unanswered questions in terms of timing, particularly with transportation infrastructure, that we don't know when it's going to happen or if it's going to happen. So that troubles me in terms of whether or not, given the, what appears to be, at least, and that's the other thing I'm struggling with from a land use perspective. I don't know if the 258 cap is all multifamily, if it's a mix of multifamily and single family. And then a fair amount of non-residential, all of which resulted in more AM and PM trips being generated than the plan that we looked at a year ago. So I'm thinking, well, either not enough has changed that, it's hard for me to say this makes sense now that if it didn't make sense a year ago, or I need more information in order to be able to really make a decision on what's going on.
I'm going to add the, the whole school district piece. We heard a year ago that the school district was darn near at full capacity. And if you put another 258 units, would next family use, those kids are then going to go to that school as well. They don't have enough room for it. So that piece, plus the interest, the, the traffic study and the infrastructure, is, is troublesome. And it's a great idea, this whole village place overlay. I really like it, too. It's not the right place. Hard to justify in this particular location.
Yep.
Simple as that, really.
For me, this is the, the, the third bite out of the apple. We saw this in August of 2023. Based on the discussion, and the deferral was requested, and we gave a deferral. Improvements were made, and then the next, to the next month, but not to our satisfaction. There were still a lot of open questions and a lot of angst in the community about what was being done or what wasn't being done or what was being attended to. I think we've come a long way, a mile, and we have another mile to go. Maybe even more. There's too many unanswered questions, too many blank spaces, things that were important and still are important, like the school. And this swap is kind of a brilliant idea to better use the land and make the school a part of it. But there's nobody here to say, this school, we're going to do that. It's open-ended. They've made it, they've, they've committed to the swap, but they're not going, they haven't said anything about building a school than that spot. And that makes a difference to the capacity, to the use of the land, et cetera. And if it, if it's not a school, is it going to be leaving as an open space, green space forever? I don't know what that actually means. Did you want to address that, Mr. Nestor?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Given, given your comments, we would ask that another deferral be, be provided. If the, if commissioners have these kind of questions, we've taken, taken notes. Hopefully, we'd be able to work with staff and get back to the commission and, and be responsive to those concerns.
How much time would you need?
Well, we'd at least want to defer to, to next month, but I don't think that that's going to be sufficient period of time. So if, if you could have two months, we would appreciate that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion?
Well, we have that other deferral from the property, not next door, but nearby, in December, just FYI.
That's in December, yeah, that's what they're talking about. Rob's going to have to manage that schedule.
Oh, okay.
Right. I don't think we'd have them both in the same night. It would be early midnight.
That's what I'm saying. I mean, Barry Johnson's, he has sort of first dibs on our December meeting, right?
Yeah, but this is, this would be, yeah, this would be December.
Yeah, it would be December or January. I mean, I don't know.
Could, would you be willing to wait until January?
If Mr. Schwartz is on the line, he might want to respond to that. But we're willing to, here, he's still, he's still on the line.
Mr. Schwartz?
It's a, it's a tough question. In, in everything we do, there are, there are timeframes. We will do what we need to, to satisfy the planning commission. We would like to speed it up if there's any way possible. But we will meet the conditions that you see forth to help us make this work.
Mr. Nestor?
Yes, sir. So if it's January, then it's January.
Well, I'm, I'm not saying it has to be January. I'm just reminding the commission that we have a big deferral issue in December. It's, that's going to be, we will really be here till midnight.
Or have a special meeting.
Or have a special meeting, I suppose.
Any other comments? Can I have a motion to accept the deferral or not?
Does it have to be with the timeline or not?
Well, it would be with the timeline. That was just a question. It's not our deferral request, it's theirs, it's January.
I'm not sure, he said, Mr. Nestor, are you suggesting it is January? Because I didn't hear that from Mr. Schwartz.
Yes, Mr. Schwartz, to paraphrase, I believe he's saying that we're going to make it work. So if, if, if the deferral is until we have to resubmit in November, get heard in January, that works.
Okay. All right, can I have a motion to accept that or not?
I'll, I'll be happy to move the, it's been so long since we started this, I need to find the name of the case.
My paper.
In case CDP 00043-2024, Oakley Landing zoning amendment, I would make the motion that we defer this hearing until a January hearing, based on the testimony we heard this evening.
And the letters, you know, and the letters we received?
Yeah.
This evening?
The letters.
Yeah.
Do I have, where's second?
Second.
We have a second. All those in favor of the acceptance of the deferral, motion for the deferral? Okay. We're in a deferral status until January. Plank, commissioners, we're not, we're not adjourned yet. Excuse me a minute, we're not, we're not adjourned. All right, is there any other business? I have no chairman's report, except to remind you about your training. You've just got a couple of months to finish.
Don't we adjourn?
So is there, is there, is there, is there anything else you wish to discuss? Hearing none, the meeting is adjourned. Yehudah. Come on back up. Thanks, Ed.